So I have a call to order, the city council meeting of the City of Lake Mills for March 2nd, 2021. Could I get a roll call, please?
Ms. Quinno?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item three, Pledge of Allegiance. For those of you that can stand, please stand with us and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, Acceptance of the City Council's Special Meeting Minutes of February 23rd, I will make a motion of adoption as written.
I will second.
So we have a motion and a second. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Abstain.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed two zero.
Thank you. Item five, Correspondence. Let's start with you, Lisa. What do you have?
Well, I received an email regarding the Cedars conditional use application and I received four or five phone calls and a couple of texts with recommendations for the folks who are seeking appointment to the council.
All right, thank you. Ms. Quinno, do you have anything?
I too received emails regarding the appointment for tonight and as well as the correspondence that Lisa referred to regarding the Cedars.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I've received quite a few emails, quite a few phone calls, and had people stop me in passing about the different appointments that are happening and goings on within the community. Some were great conversations, others were unfortunately less than cordial, but we moved on past that and hopefully we'll get a sitting council here pretty quick-like and we can move on with city business very soon. All right, that moves us on to questions and public comment. Excuse me. Public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. There's no public hearings tonight. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments. And fill in the sign-in sheet, fill out the sign-in sheet provided. For those, if you're online and want to make comments, please type your name and address into the chat feature. So let's go to the online. Do we have anybody online that wishes to speak in public comments? I am not seeing anyone raise their hand, so we will move on. For those folks that are in the building here, if you'd like to speak now, the opportunity is yours.
Okay. Brandy Brozkowski-Duro, 204 Westlake Park Place. And I'm here to talk about the way that the city council and plan commission decides to enforce or not enforce the city codes as they're written and what type of leniencies are provided after people have violated codes and if that's a good way to proceed in the future and for what we want to be as a community. We have guidelines in place that you apply for a conditional use permit prior to going ahead and doing work. And that way you know what kind of activities are involved, if they need a special permit or not. And when somebody goes ahead and does work without doing this and then thinks that after the fact, they can come and ask the city for a post-construction, post-destruction conditional use permit, it brings into question the way that we have compliance in the city. I know that if I want to put up a fence, I have to have a permit and I have to stay within certain guidelines. I can't come afterwards and say, well, I already put it up. Can't you please just let me keep my tall fence? Same thing with building houses, we have setbacks that you have to follow. So I find it something that's very important for our city, that we don't become known as a lake community where you can move and buy property here and do what you want to your private property because it's private property and then after you do the work, to come and ask the city for leniency because you didn't know better and say, I didn't mean to make it the mistake, I didn't know it, and then ask for a conditional use permit after the fact. And I'm just looking at it in terms of going forward in our city, how we want to view compliance and enforcement on issues of conditional use permits. Thank you.
Thank you. The floor is open for anyone else who would like to speak at this time. All right, seeing none, we will close public comments. Excuse me. And we will move on to the city manager's report.
Steve.
Now, let me get my mic on. There we go. All right, I provided a memo called Medium Cheddar, so that's me. And then the treasurer's reports for the month of January and then the Jefferson County Joint Committee Resolution, their comprehensive plan changes. So that's all I have unless there are any questions.
No, I don't have any questions on any of them.
I had a question on the Jefferson County resolution, Steve. I just was wondering if you could give us a quick overview of how the county-wide plans intersect with our work in the city? Are we bound by those plans or how does that work together?
No, the city isn't bound by any of the county plans. Generally, that does do some to the towns, depending on how the towns do their zoning. So, but you know, for cities and villages, we're independent on the zoning requirements and they're required to follow our extraterritorial jurisdiction requirements and those types of things. But a lot of it over the last 20 years has been superseded, so we really don't have a lot of authority out there anymore anyways, but they can't make us do anything in the city either.
Okay, thank you. And I also wanted to thank you for your memo. It was very interesting to think about, you know, your role and the role of the city council and thank you for not asking us what type of cheese we each are.
All right, Ms. Quinno, do you have anything for Mr. Wilkie?
No, but I will echo what Lisa said about the cheddar article. It made me wonder what that could possibly be and then I got to read through it and that was very encouraging.
All right, thank you. For those folks listening, those folks in the audience here, if you haven't gone online to look at the city council meeting agenda, there's some good documentation about our finances and other pieces about the county that are inside the agenda. So if you want to know where we sit, we're sitting with funds for TIDS and things like that. All that data is in there and available to you. Item eight, acceptance of the minutes from the Plan Commission of December 8th, 2020 and the Parks Board of January 20th, 2021 will go on record as written. And once again, those minutes are out there for you to look at, very good information out there. The boards and committees are what truly guide our actions out here as the council. Item nine, council business. Presentation, discussion with applicants for appointment to vacant District Two term ending April 2023, city council position. All right, so we are going to, we're gonna set this up the same way we handled the last appointment. So the folks will get about five minutes to come up and give us some information about them, why they would like to be on the council, any conflicts, interests they can think of that might cause issues for them. With the three, only three council members here present, I may open up some questions to the council members if they decide they would like to ask some, but they're not going to be required to. So after we get through all of the names, there will be a, I will open up nominations. So once nominations are opened up, we'll ask for the nomination and a second. The first person that gets a nomination and a second, they'll get a vote. If they pass by the majority, they'll be the next member on the council. If not, the nomination will open back up again. So with that being said, I'm going to go down the list and I'll ask the applicants to step up to the microphone and you get about, give us a good five minutes, whatever you got. If you have less, that's okay. Just give us some info about yourself and your thoughts, why you'd like to be on the council and then we'll go from there. So the very first person is Scott Thompson. Is Scott Thompson here? There you are, sir. Floor's yours.
You can press the green button?
Yes, please. You see it there on the little microphone?
On the mic.
Yep, yep.
There we go. Am I live? Am I good? Well, thank you, council. Thank you, members. Thank you, public. This is a, the fact that you're doing this is a, shows that the system is working and that's why I'm here. I'll be transparent, I'm very new to Lake Mills and I think that I have something to offer based on that fact. I'll give you a little bit of background about myself. I actually live in Ward Seven. I purchased, a bit of irony, I purchased Steve Field's house. I don't know if he's in the live audience out there, but Steve, hi, I bought your house. Steve was great and I live with my wife Katie, she's a social worker. I have a son, Soren, who's in 4K here. And I've spent majority of my career, last 20 years or so, in the health field, specifically in pharmaceuticals with Pfizer and Merck. And in that time, I've had a lot of time to move around to different cities and I've seen cities do it right, cities grow exponentially and do it right. And I've seen cities, towns grow exponentially and not do it right. And I've always been, I've always admired Lake Mills because I think it's a testament to the leadership, but I think it's a testament to the people here that they care about their community. And when I worked at Merk, this is probably 10-plus years ago, I had a colleague that still lives in Lake Mills, but she would show me pictures, the great community. And I'm sort of in the fourth quarter of my career. I'm sort of winding things down in the health and the pharmaceutical field. In this business, you move around a lot. So I'm done moving. I've settled my family, I've done a lot of research. To move to Lake Mills, I know what it's like to research a place that you want to call home. I know what seekers are looking for. And you might say Lake Mills is in a precipice right now and it's sort of a hotspot. I mean, that's just the fact. It's between Milwaukee and Madison and it's all the rage right now, it's all the buzz. And you know this, by houses that go on the market sell relatively quickly. So what do I hope to bring if I were on the city council? Well, of course, I've got my years of leadership experience in pharmaceuticals and healthcare, private, private world of business, committees, teams, et cetera. But I think what I said from the outset is I bring sort of a newcomer's nuance to things. There's people here with great respect that have been here 23 years or, you know, dozens of years. I really respect that. And so I would be an outlier in that regard, but that's, that's why I'm here, is because I do care about the community. This is where I've chosen to settle and I think I could bring that viewpoint, that aspect to the city council. And with that, I humbly submit my application and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay, next up is Mr. Josh Schumacher. Oh, there you are, Josh. Floor's yours.
Good evening, everyone, council members. My name is Josh Schumacher. I am here to submit my application, I guess, for the city council position that's open. Things that I think I can contribute to the city council are my, is the experience I've gained in helping out and volunteering for the different areas of the Lake Mills area. Five or six years ago, I volunteered as a assistant wrestling coach at the high school. Five years ago, I have, was appointed to the board of review for the city, so I've been doing that for five years now. Three years ago, I joined in on the plan commission, so I've been doing that for my term of three years, which just ended or just lapsed, so I'll have to resubmit for that. And I'd like to echo the sentiments that were just stated earlier. I think the City of Lake Mills is a great community. My wife and I decided to move here about eight and a half years ago and have had two boys. One, our oldest is now joining in 4K in the fall and we've really tried to make Lake Mills home. Additionally, I think that we are in a unique period of time in the city's history where we are going through this exponential growth and I'd like to contribute as someone who is going to be raising a family here for a long period of time in how this, in making decisions on, in helping make decisions on how the city grows and how it positions itself between maintaining its small, small city feel nestled away between the larger markets of Madison and Milwaukee while also giving opportunity for everybody else who wants to join in on our community to have, you know, sound decisions made for the housing restrictions that seem to be plaguing not only Lake Mills but the rest of the state. And then just offering up any other effort or ability I can to help the city grow. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to Mr. John Litcher. Litcher? I know I'm butchering your name and I apologize.
That's okay. It's been butchered before. First of all, President Foster and respected members of this council, it's a pleasure to be in front of you today, tonight. I live at 1011 Forestview Court in Lake Mills, Wisconsin. I've had the pleasure of living here 23 years, however, not consecutively. We, we lived here from 1979 to 2002. From, in that time, I had three that are now adult children, go through our public school system and engaged with the community in a number of activities, basically Rotarian Club, Optimist Club, youth coach, youth coaches of both basketball and baseball. We moved back closer to our home in 2002 because we had, both my wife and I had elderly parents and we had responsibilities with them and to move closer was just the right thing to do. So for 17 years, we lived in the city of Beaver Dam. And then in 2018, after both of our parents passed, we decided that this was our home. We have lived here longer than in any other place in our lives, so we came back to that. And once again, I was engaged in both youth sports, coaching basketball and baseball for our youth. I have a grandson that's in the middle school, so he's quite active and it's a enjoyable situation. The two things that I think I bring to this council, as my resume stated, I wasn't going to go in depth on that because I think it's explanatory, but I've had 12 years' experience on a city council in the city of Beaver Dam and also as council president. Many of the issues that come before you, I have had the pleasure of an experience of understanding them, working with them, being educated by the debate and the dialogue that goes on in that regard. And so I think I bring a working knowledge that's fairly immediate and fairly specific in regards to my council work in the city of Beaver Dam at that time, whether that be in the issues of shared revenue, road aids, expenditure restraint program, the planning commission and other types of activities that do come before you. Those are activities that, as I say, I had what I call very valuable experience and what I would bring to this council. Also in addition, as you see, I was, I worked in, at state government level as the Secretary of the Department of Corrections and Secretary of Department Employment Relations. Both of those experiences had given me a broad array of experiences in dealing with the state bureaucracy. It is bureaucracy and you need to know how to navigate that. And in my prior council work and this council work, if I have the pleasure of having your support, I would be an advocate for not only the council but the city of Lake Mills in front of the Wisconsin Legislature, which I have still many, both of both acquaintances and friends that are, are in the state legislature because I have worked with them on both sides of the aisle. And so as a result, I think I can offer that to the council and that might make my experience more unique than possibly others, is basically the range of experience that I've had in state government, local government, i.e. through a council. And then I, as I also, as my resume states, I was the superintendent of schools here for just under 10 years. And as a result, all those forms of local government, local experience, state government, state experience, I think it brings to advance the cause of Lake Mills, advance the cause of this council, advance the cause of our residents. So I would appreciate your support. I would appreciate your vote and I appreciate the opportunity to answer any question that you may have later. Thank you, President Foster.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Mr. Douglas Devon. Floor's yours.
My name is Douglas Devon and I live at 228 Water Street. What is necessary to be a council member? I think common sense, the ability to think things through and make fact-based decisions, having patience, and more importantly, whether the rule needs to be implemented in the first place that you're dealing with. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should. Policy, in my opinion, is one of government's biggest issues and problems to deal with. As an example, I'll give local examples of why I say that. Recent school board events allowed citizens their right and obligation to remove an elected official when the actions they determine, they deemed went beyond the rules required for such a position. Subsequent to that, another board event occurred, according, and this is according to the Lake Mills leader, involving Administrator Dr. Olson. Tense words started before the board meeting was called to order over attendees' refusal to wear a face mask. Because of its policy, Dr. Olson asked those who are not wearing face masks to leave the building, stating a virtual option is also available for those who do not want to wear a face covering and board meetings going forward will likely be in an all-virtual format to quote, "avoid additional problems." Additional problems? Students must abide by a series of bullying policies that the school has in place. So why shouldn't board members have to follow the same rules? They intimidated these people who didn't wear face masks, they told them what they had to do and they, in my opinion, were bigoted in their policy decision-making. Will the citizens act again? It's up to them. The mask mandate is not law. Lockdowns and mask mandates will end only when the people demand them to end and the facts support the citizen on this issue, not policy. I was looking at the online CVs of all these people. I'm apparently the only one who didn't give one. And again, to clarify why it is not the most important item to consider, I'll give you my CV in a nutshell. My majors are in the hard sciences, taking courses I had no interest in because of school policy required them for me to get my well-rounded education and the degree I wanted from them. I received my BS, and there's no pun intended here, in chemistry, a bachelor's degree in microbiology and a minor in mathematics in four years. I received my MD, did a five-year surgical residency with a year of plastic surgery in complex wound repair and limb reimplantations. I was an associate clinical professor at the medical college for eight years or so and had a solo practice of my own with a number of staff privileges at Level One Trauma Hospitals, which are the highest level for severe injury accidents. Does my paper CV tell you if I am qualified for this position? Absolutely not. What needs consideration is what you can't see from this paper trail I've given you, in this case, my verbal trail. While proven rules work for surgeons, many times we are faced with situations not experienced in our training or even our readings of the journals. Spur the moment innovative decisions must be made. So I did what needed to be done at the time it needed to be done and policies had nothing to do with it. It didn't matter if you were a regular citizen, a crook, a cop, who was in a bad accident or shot. It didn't matter what race or gender you were, as documented by the genetic XX for a female or the genetic XY for a male. Or somewhere in between this alphabet soup mix of today's politically created societal genders. Victim status and policy in those regards had nothing to do with the decisions I had to make. Now, think about, this is not just talk, but think about operating on somebody with AIDS at the time. One slip of the knife by you or your techs working with you means the end of your medical career and probably later on down the road, death. That is what chaos looks like, truly. And this country is getting into a state of chaos. But that's when real decision, clear thinking and action must occur. That's where trust and respect enter the picture. It is not policy that told me I had to do something. I did it because it needed to be done at that moment. No policy, no policy should ever hold you back from doing the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. This is why what elected officials must do and this is what I can do because I've done it. These are the reasons you should use to consider my appointment, not my paper trail. Regarding conflicts of interest, now we were asked in the email that we all got, if you have any conflicts of interest. I don't, to my knowledge. I don't, to my knowledge. But I submit to you, for the purpose of these appointments, the entire council members may have conflicts of interest of significant proportion. Now, why do I say that? I say it because the spring primary has two candidates listed on the ballot. One, a seated member of the council, and the other, who is here today, and mind you, has every right to be here today to apply for that vacant position because it is her right as a citizen to do so. But what I'm worried about, if you think this is a conflict of interest, what if you seat this person? Okay, fine. But isn't that a conflict of interest that you tell us we shouldn't have or can't have? Isn't that a policy that's been formulated that needs to be addressed? Voters would now, if that happens, have no choice and no vote for the spring primary. Why? Because nomination dates are passed and gone. It's a slam dunk done deal. The right to vote, patient, uh, people's, citizens' choice will not be allowed in that situation. And I think that's an important thing to consider. The candidate still has an excellent chance to show the qualifications and why she should be elected to replace this person because of things this person did or didn't do and the reasons why they were done or not done. To me, that gives a sense of voter right to choose who they should elect to be in office, to either keep, reject, and get somebody new. That's a choice that would no longer be available, and that, to me, I would ask you, would be your conflict of interest. Now, I don't think our country is divided.
Excuse me, sir, how, how much longer do you have?
Yeah, just, I, I think government is divided, and that's what I want to try to deal with and change when I'm appointed to this position. Thank you. If you have any questions, fire away.
Yeah, not right now, but thank you very much, sir. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Your vote.
Okay, that brings us up to Ms. Lisa Bollinger. Floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lisa Bollinger. Nice to see you. Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Bollinger, and I live at 335 Water Street, just down the street here. And I'm excited to have an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I submitted a letter of introduction, just to let everyone here also know. I grew up in Madison. I went to the University of Wisconsin. I recently retired, so I'm making a big jump here. I recently retired from a career as a school administrator from some prairie, and I am now teaching English as a second language at Whitewater Middle School, so I'm a lifetime educator. In my time of being an educator and an administrator, I've had many, many opportunities to work and development. I actually helped develop an entire school program in the summer high schools, in our alternative high school. I've had a lot of opportunity to interact with various boards and agencies, and I believe I have a pretty solid understanding of how councils, elected boards operate. I am going to bring up the word "policy" that was just recently discussed because I believe that policy can serve as guideposts for people in, working in the fields and for those who are overseeing the projects that they're doing. Policies occasionally, maybe even frequently, need to be reviewed and updated, but they provide a place for the vision of an elected board to identify what their priorities and standards are going to be. Lake Mills, my husband and I moved here in June of 2018. We are relative newcomers, although we both have a long history of knowing a number of people in this community and visiting it regularly, which is why it became our destination. As we were approaching our retirement stage of life, we've always enjoyed the lakes, the lake, the parks, the bike trail, the local businesses. We're interested in providing more service, and I see this as an opportunity to continue my work as someone who tries to make the world a better place, to support the needs of a community and an organization. And I'm optimistic about where the city is going. That's why we're here. That's why my husband and I are here, and that's why I'm looking to continue in my role as a servant leader. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
That brings us up to Ms. Catherine Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council members, and good evening to my neighbors. My name is Catherine Bishop, and I reside at 227 West Madison Street. I have no community interest that would cause a conflict of interest either now or in the future if I were to serve on this council. I'll tell you briefly about myself and my qualifications and how that can benefit the council and the city. You have a copy of my resume with the Agenda Matters, so I will focus on the intangibles that cannot be captured on paper. First and foremost, I am a first-time mother to a four-month-old. Everything I do now is for my child, and I think the parents in this room understand that feeling. Professionally, I have worked for a small investment firm for the past year, and like others in small business, we weathered the storms of 2020 and have emerged in 2021 with renewed focus. I think I would understand the struggles that business owners here in Lake Mills have encountered in the past year. I am also no stranger to community service. While serving in the Army as a lawyer, I was called to various assignments, each with increasing complexity and responsibility. I needed to learn each new job quickly, often through self-study. Not only was I required to learn my job and the law and each new practice area, but I was required to be right. Our military commanders relied upon it. The other thing you can't tell from my resume is how I learned to work with people from diverse backgrounds to achieve the mission. Working with others is about relationships and effective communication. While in Germany, I worked with German law enforcement and state officials directly in order to transfer jurisdiction from criminal cases from the Germans to the U.S. military jurisdiction for prosecution. I also successfully prosecuted over 20 felony cases in two years in Germany. I worked closely with military police investigators and CID to investigate crimes that occurred both on and off military installations. I will work here to forge those same types of relationships in Lake Mills in order to achieve the mission. Most recently in my military career, in addition to advising First Special Forces Commander and his staff on a range of regulatory issues, including budgetary appropriations and acquisitions, I also served as a neutral detached hearing officer in preliminary criminal proceedings. I presided over formal hearings where both sides, the prosecution and the defense, presented their evidence and arguments. And after those hearings, I made written findings of facts and rulings consistent with the law. I give you this example to show that I am comfortable taking in and evaluating information from all sides, and I will do so to make informed decisions. Further, I am fully aware of, and I have weighed carefully, the impact that my decisions had on the parties involved: the soldiers, commanders, victims, witnesses, and families, just to name some, the stakeholders, if you will. Mr. Foster, in the January 5th meeting this year, you asked the nominees who the stakeholders are in Lake Mills. Stakeholders are those who may be affected by, or those who may have an effect on, an effort. And there are three types: primary, secondary, and key stakeholders. Mrs. Quinell's answer focused on secondary stakeholders, when she said it is the people who are not yet here. While this is true, we must plan for those to come. We must also not forsake the stakeholders to whom we are currently beholden, as we also owe them a duty of representation. The primary stakeholders, I may have just touched something on the screen, so if it's messed up, somebody can come and fix me, but I will say, I'll pause for a second, I apologize.
You're good.
I'm good, okay. All right, I didn't want to shut myself off or screw up the meeting. So, back to the important part, though. Thank you, Mr. Drescher. The primary stakeholders are the current residents, the voters, business owners, and taxpayers in the city. But there is also a third type, a key stakeholder. And that's what the city council members are, and that's what I will be if appointed. Key stakeholders are the decision-makers. As a key stakeholder and decision-maker for the city, I promise to take into consideration all available aspects of an issue before voting. I will always be transparent before the council and before the city. I invite comment from the public on issues, realizing that I am their representative, their voice, to steer the direction in which the city moves in the next few years with lasting impact. To steer in the right direction, we must be proactive about forecasting and managing our inevitable growth in a way that also best preserves our close-knit community. I think many of us agree that this is a key issue facing our city, but I am the right person for the job. Thank you for your consideration. I look forward to serving the city and its stakeholders on this council, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
And our last person, Mr. Greg Waters. There you are. Sir, the floor is yours. Think you might be muted still.
I think I'm good now. Can you hear me?
There you, now we can hear you. Yep.
Well, please excuse my voice as, as it's having some issues tonight, but it's an honor to, to be here remotely. I'd like to thank Vicky Schmidt for her 30 years of service to the city of Lake Mills. She's been a steady hand and has made our city better. Before I outline my excitement for this opportunity, I'd like to take some time to recognize our Lake Mills girls' basketball team on winning the state championship this past weekend. Teams had great success over the years, winning their first tournament in Randolph as fifth graders, and continuing their winning ways by dominating an undefeated team for the state title. These girls, coaches, and parents have worked hard to perfect their skills and deserve all the success they have achieved this year. My family's enjoyed living in Lake Mills for the past 20 years and recognize it to be a special place. We have many wonderful people and organizations in Lake Mills. I've worked with U-Sports, the local Boy Scout troop, as well as serving on the Economic Commission for the City of Lake Mills, and the Board of Directors at Fort Health Care as a representative of Lake Mills. Through my experiences, I've enjoyed working and interacting with people to help them reach their goals. I've worked for area companies for over 30 years and been in senior leadership roles for over 25 years. My current role is Vice President of Client Success at Trio Wellness. I do not anticipate any conflicts of interest with the city council opening, but recluse myself from issues where I might conflict, where conflicts might arise down the road. With that said, I've enjoyed researching this role and became more excited as I've read the handbook for Wisconsin municipal officials and reviewed the city budget. It seems like some of the biggest challenges for Lake Mills moving forward center around their success as a community. I would look forward to working with everyone to properly manage our growth as we move from a fourth-class city to the larger third-class status. We will continue to be a great place to live by supporting our businesses to provide local jobs, managing the tax incremental districts to improve our tax rule, and working with city services to address growth concerns like yard waste. Over the next couple of years, Lake Mills will experience some key staff retirements, requiring a review of responsibilities and organizational structure. My past and current experience, experiences with budgeting, financial reporting, hiring of key staff members, transitional planning, and developing successful organizations would serve the city well through this period of change. I look forward to working with the people of Lake Mills and will passionately work for positive outcomes if I'm called upon tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so with that being said, do, do either of you two have any questions that you would like to ask any specific candidate? And if not, that's, that's okay also.
Mike, can we take a five-minute recess to think?
I don't see an issue with that.
Does that, motion to?
Yep. You're making a motion to?
Yes, I'm making a motion to take a five-minute recess.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's roll, have a roll call vote.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Fennell?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion pass 3-0.
Okay, we are in a five-minute recess. Okay, we are, I myself echo too much. We are hereby reconvened, and we will take up Item 9B, which will be the appointment of the district to council representative, term ending April 2023. So, as I stated before, the way this is going to work, I'll open nominations, and the nomination will be made, and if a second is given, we'll vote on that person. If a second is not given, we'll open nominations back up again and complete that, or keep doing that process until we come up with a new council representative. So, with that being said, I am going to open nominations, and I would like to start out with a nomination for Mr. Greg Waters.
I'll second that.
So we have a nomination and a second for Mr. Greg Waters. Could you please call the roll call vote?
Mr. Foster, could we just have some discussion?
Uh, yeah, certainly. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. And really, just, I wanted to say something that you had said last week, which I thought was really important, is that there are so many qualified candidates here tonight. I want to thank every one of them for, for submitting their applications and for their interest in our city, and we really hope that just because you're not selected doesn't diminish your enthusiasm for continuing to serve our city. So thank you, everyone who spoke tonight.
I could not have said that better, Lisa.
Yeah, so I'll echo that, too. I usually try to say something, and tonight my mind is a little scattered, a few things going on besides fighting a kidney stone here, so just bear with me a little bit.
That sucks.
So, yeah, I truly appreciate everybody that has put their name forward, put their lives forward to serve on this city council as a community. We have never seen this much interest in moving our community in the right direction, and we truly do appreciate it, and we don't want to stop you from trying again in the future or getting yourself on commissions and boards. And like I mentioned before, commissions and boards is, that's truly where our community blossoms compared to other communities. We have great people on them, they do great work, and they make our job up here in a council a lot easier to make good decisions. Are we perfect? No, not by any means, but we're doing... No, not by any means, but we're doing pretty decent work, I think. I'm sure people disagree with us, but that's okay. I've long come to the conclusion that I'll never make a right decision ever again as long as I'm on council. So, I just, I do, I make decisions based on the information I have and the questions I ask people and the information I can gather from outside sources to make the best decision for us as a community, and that's the way I hope every council member will approach this job. This job is a nonpartisan position, so if you're thinking partisan politics or you are very partisan in your thoughts, this may not be the job for you, because we really truly have to think what's best for our community, what's best for our neighbors, what's best for our schools, and how can we keep this community healthy and vibrant without bringing partisan politics in it. There's way too much in the state, there's way too much in the federal government, and we really don't need it here. So, and Mr. Devon did bring it up, bring up the point that there could have been a very big, and there still could be, a very big conflict of interest with one of the candidates that's up here tonight. And I did a lot of soul-searching, and I did a lot of investigation, not only with the ethics committees, with the election board, with the Government Accountability Office, and if that person would have been nominated, policy, for lack of a better word, says that the decision has to be made and can be made, but we're not at that point, and I don't know what my decision would have been if that would have happened. But we're at a point right now for a vote for Mr. Greg Waters, and if Mr. Waters does not pass, then we will move on to the next person.
So, we can hear you if we can.
That's not what we're saying. So, please call the roll call vote unless there's any other comments.
Before I call this, can I just confirm that that was Ms. Curler that made the second?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. And for those that have asked the question, I have actually had more phone calls from Mr. Waters than I have for any other constituent or any other person out there, so. All right, welcome, Mr. Waters.
Congratulations, Greg.
The staff will get in contact with you and work out the details.
Great, thank you for your support, and if you wanted to make a call for all between ten and twelve, that would be awesome.
I missed, I missed what he said, I'm sorry.
I got it. One of us called.
We are moving on to item C, the board appointment for the city council representative, Lisa Curler, to the Economic Development Commission. This is appointment made by the city council president and approved by the city council. Is there a motion to appoint Lisa Curler to the Economic Development Commission?
I move to put Lisa Curler on the Economic Development Commission.
And I'll second it. Did you get that, Misty?
I did, thank you. Are you ready for the roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Item 9D, City Manager Appointment, City Council Representative Lisa Curler to the Lake Mills Housing Authority. This is another appointment by the city council president, and I am looking for a motion of adoption to appoint Lisa Curler to the Lake Mills Housing Authority.
I move to appoint Lisa Curler to the Housing Authority.
I second it.
We've got somebody with no mic out there.
That's me, Mike. I think, I think it's a city manager appointment.
Is it a city manager appointment?
Yeah, it's a city manager.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, then.
And I, it's a, it's an official notification with the council that she's been appointed to the Housing Authority by me, and I assume that we'll stay that way until May, when there's a reorganization of the council, and then we'll look at who gets what committees again at that time.
Exactly, yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we don't have any action on that one. Oh, you're right, it does say right in there, city manager. Told you, the pain is getting better on me. Okay. Item E, Discussion Decision on Bid Award Contract 1-2021, Jefferson Street, Lake Street, and Reed Street Construction. Could I get that title read, please?
City Council Motion 21-3-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for Jefferson Street, Lake Street, and Reed Street reconstruction, contract 1-2021.
All right, and that's motion 21-3-1-1. Could I get a motion of adoption?
Lisa just did.
Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead of you. I move, I move adoption of motion 21-3-1-1.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Is there a second?
I second it.
All right, that brings us into discussion, and I believe Brandon's here, correct? You there, Brandon?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. This is the Lake Street, Jefferson Street, and Reed Street bid. We received five bids. A little bid was from A1 Excavating. They are a very known contractor. They actually did most of the work on the State Highway 89 project, although they were technically not the prime on that project. They did all of the underground piping and, I believe, all the road grating as well, so they were the one that the city worked with probably most of the time on that project. They also will be installing all the infrastructure for the Tyranny and Point subdivision off Mud Lake Road this summer as well, so they're a qualified contractor and provided a bid that was less the engineer's estimate, so I feel like it's a good price for the project.
All right, so Steve, are we looking at bonds for this later in the year?
There, the project is broken up into three different categories, and trying to, yeah. So, there's $578,000 worth of water project across these three projects, or actually, there's $578,000 worth of water projects that will be bonded for by the water utility. Jefferson Street is a total tid project, so all expenses on Jefferson Street will be paid for by the tid. So...
Had you said, I'm sorry.
Yes, by tid number three.
Okay.
So, we'll be bonding for that sometime later. That's, Betsy will start taking care of that. But $578,000 between Lake and Reed Street for water, that will be bonded. There's $462,000 worth of wastewater treatment plant, and that will come out of unreserved fund balance or fund balance for the wastewater utility. Yeah, in fact, I got $562,297 for tid number three. $871,513.91 for streets, and $8,400 for electric, roughly. So that's how it breaks out. So, electric is going to come out of fund balance. Streets will have to bond for it. Streets include sidewalks, pavement, curbing gutter, and stormwater. And I want to note that we made some substantial changes in the stormwater from the beginning of this project till the end. So, there was a stormwater line running down the backyards on the north side of Ferry, coming off of, or on the north side of West Lake Street, coming off of Ferry, and we rerouted that all into the right-of-way of Ferry and West Lake Street, and we have inserted a pretty substantial water treatment system. And if you have any questions, Brandon, it would be a good one to go over on how that water treatment system runs, because all that water in that area runs into the lake. Most of the street actually runs into the mill pond, but this area here runs into the lake, and, and as you know, we did several, I don't know, about five years ago, we did a major study on all the stormwater running to the lake here and how we would tie it together and treat it. And so, if you have any questions on that, Brandon can answer that. Reed Street was a sanitary sewer problem. I don't know if you remember, but the street kept flowing into the sanitary sewer line and creating subsidencees or holes in pavement, which is pretty substantial, seeing as the water, the sanitary sewer is quite deep there. So this project moved to the top of the list. It had a lot of lead, had a lot of lead water services, and we ended up actually extending it down Fargo Street further than we anticipated, so that project got a little bit bigger than we had talked about. So, if you remember when we talked that we would have some savings on the bolt launch that we would like to apply in some other areas, this would be a little bit of that. The other portion is, is that we are going to attempt to attach a change order to run the water main down East Lake Street there, where it keeps breaking in front of the businesses, just east of Main Street and along in front of the Commons Park. I think there've been like 10 breaks there, and it's, it's time we fix that. It's giving more expense to make the fixes than it is to just fix them, replace it. So, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
No, I can't think of anything. I just wanted to make sure that where we were getting the money from and seeing a lot of it come out of the tid and out of the utilities and out of the other unreserved fund balances makes a lot of sense.
Steve, I was interested in, you're referencing to the stormwater treatment, and I think Dwayne had mentioned that, told me a little bit about that when I was in the city offices last week. Brandon, can you, I didn't see quite where that was on the plans. Can you just give us a brief summary of that? I mean, I think it's really important, because obviously this drains to the lake, so to have some, you know, being, using the latest technology to treat that, I think is going to be really great, but I wasn't quite clear where it was on the plan.
Yeah. So currently, like you said, the Ferry Drive, there's a substantial stormwater watershed on Ferry Drive north of Lake Street. It goes north for quite a few blocks and then branches off on some of the connecting streets east and west of Ferry Drive that funnels down Ferry Drive and eventually goes behind people's houses and out into the lake. The other portion of the project's watershed is a portion of West Lake Street, maybe midway from Main Street to the lake that also flows towards the lake. That's all overland, it just kind of runs in the curb lines to the lake. And so what we're doing is we're taking most of that, both the West Lake Street watershed and the Ferry Drive watershed, and sending them through a large manhole that has a baffle in it that basically directs the stormwater down and kind of slows it down, and has a sediment, the pollutants kind of fall out of it into this manhole that has a five-foot something in it, so it's got some sediment and pollution capturing capacity there. The tough part is that, that, I mean, it does capture a substantial amount of sediment. The company that provides this ran some modeling for us, and it was about a 43% sediment removal, which is pretty substantial in my mind, considering that, I mean, to some degree, you have no sediment removal right now, so that's, that's important. You know, there's just not a lot of room really to do much else unless you start buying up people's yards or anything in that area, so that's, that's kind of what we were able to accomplish in that area.
Well, that sounds great. It's still, it's, you know, better than the current condition, so I think that's really a good step forward. And is that device going to require a certain amount of maintenance then, long-term?
Yeah, that's a great point, great question. Yes, it will have to be sucked out by city staff from time to time. Not sure how often that will be exactly, but those have to kind of pop it open every so often and see how fast it's filling up. The city does have a vac trailer, so it should be, you know, fairly straightforward to just stick that down there and suck it out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, if not, let's call the roll call vote, please.
Sorry, aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed three zero.
Item 9F, Resolution 21-12, Conditional Use Request. Could I get that title read, please?
City Council Resolution 21-12, Conditional Use Permit Declarations and Findings, Kenneth and Audrey Computer, Alternative Shoreline Vegetation Cutting Plan and Grading Within 300 Feet of the Ordinary High Watermark of Rock Lake, 304 Lakeshore Drive, Parcel Identification
Okay, before we go into a motion of adoption, I'd like to get our planner to speak on this. Are you doing that again, Brandon, or is Dustin on? Oh, there he is. Floor is yours.
So, this item had a hearing at the Plan Commission meeting last month. It was certainly a long hearing with lots of input from, from neighbors, staff, plan commissioners, and of course, the petitioner. The issue here is to focus on the conditional use request, which is the alternative cutting plan for the shoreline vegetation, construction of a retaining wall, and grading within 300 feet of the shore. The motion that was passed, ultimately, the recommendations of the Plan Commission, had a series of requirements for the ultimate development of the site. If you're familiar with this site, this is an area of the lakeshore that is actually located across the street from the properties with the residences on them. The properties are very, I'll say, shallow in relation to their depth from the shoreline to, in this case, the roadway, and they are very steep. There are typically retaining walls constructed to help with shoreline issues. This site had a stairway and a boathouse constructed previously. They are looking to make some changes, which were generally approved with a patio, I will say, down near the water's edge. There is riprap existing on the water's edge, which will retain, be retained, and then there is, again, the addition of some retaining walls. Conditions of approval focused on the alternative vegetative cutting plan, which is to focus on, obviously, retaining the soils, minimizing any erosion issues, that we remove non-native species and plant native species wherever practical, and in this case, use of landscape fabric for erosion control on the disturbed soils until the plantings establish themselves. The grading issue, there are a series of conditions that were approved by the Plan Commission, but in a nutshell, that, you know, permanent cover needs to be planted, a definitive planting plan is provided, that the retaining wall will be reviewed and approved by the city engineer and public work staff to ensure that it is constructed in such a way that it will be structurally sound, but also to ensure that the slope of the soil is at least as steep it is now or lessened. So, that's an issue that will be evaluated by the city engineer when they submit detailed construction plans and when they are out there in construction. So, rather than a specific height... So rather than a specific height, um, while they are showing three feet, some latitude was given, um, to the engineering staff to ensure that the soils are preserved. One of the other items that are on, on tonight's agenda is, um, a privilege in the street. There is a need for retaining wall up at the, uh, off the edge of the roadway. Again, if you've been out there, um, uh, the, uh, development of these sites, um, does, um, kind of, I'll say, intrude into the right-of-way. They've just been that way for decades. Uh, and again, any improvements or changes within the right-of-way do, do require, uh, the approval of, of the city with the privilege in the street. Um, at the end of the day, the, the focus here is to ensure, uh, stability of the soils along the, um, along the shoreline, to ensure plantings that, um, are native to, to, to Lake Mills of the region, um, to ensure that we are providing, um, aesthetic value and mitigating, um, sightlines to and from the lake, um, that we just don't have bare ground, um, or bare sites, um, to the lake, uh, to and from the lake, um, to have an alternative, uh, plan that can be implemented and will meet with the criteria of our code. Um, and then the last kind of element to this that was added, uh, by the Plan Commission was the condition that, uh, the site will be evaluated two consecutive years, uh, starting, um, uh, about a year after construction, or six months after construction, excuse me, uh, to ensure that plantings have, um, um, I'll say rooted and are accomplishing what they are intended to. Uh, so they will be evaluated over a series of, uh, growing seasons and, uh, it is quite possible that some, you know, some replacement plantings will be required, um, or additional plantings for that matter, if we are not getting the, um, soil, soil stability, uh, that we need along the shoreline. That's enough detail for now, Mr. Foster, but I can certainly answer any questions.
Nope, that's, uh, plenty for right now. Thank you, sir. Um, so with that being said, before we start discussing it, I would entertain a motion of adoption for, excuse me, let me get back to it here, for the conditional use permit. One here, 21 dash...
12.
Shoot.
21 dash 12.
12, there it is. Okay, I'll entertain a motion of adoption.
I move to adopt Resolution 21 dash 12.
Is there a second? I'll, excuse me, I'll second it, excuse me. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, so we can discuss it. Um, I was on the Plan Commission for this and these individuals are not the individuals that started work before, uh, they put a plan forward. So these folks have done everything that they've been required to do ahead of time. And the only thing that I had any concern with was some of the requests to make the, the lower wall, uh, higher than what they had had in their, their drawings. Um, so I met with the, the staff afterwards and looked at some of the plans because there is a, there's a potential plan to redo that road down there in the next seven years. Um, so making sure that that wall fits the requirements for loading and offloading of road traffic, uh, is very, it would be very beneficial for them to do it correct now so we don't have to come back and, and tell them that it has to be redone when we come back to do this, uh, roadwork in the future.
And Mike, you're talking about the lower retaining wall that would be behind the, the patio? Okay.
Yep. The one that we talk about, we'll talk about later, the upper one, um, it has some other requirements on it, um, but we'll talk about that later. So, uh, where was I going with this? Uh, if you read through the memo, um, everything that has been laid out has been looked at by the staff and okayed based on the plans that they, they currently have on the, uh, on their drawings. So we put in a couple of recommendations for the review portion of it, just because we know that the slopes and some of that area down there is not conducive for, for growing certain plants. So we wanted to make sure that we could follow up on it and we set our own schedule to go back there and make sure that we're looking at it, to make sure that the plantings are growing and rooting and doing what they're supposed to do. Um, but that was the only concern that the Plan Commission had.
Is there any concern about, um, runoff from when they put this together, the, the products that are going to be used being, um, put into the lake?
So Dustin, I don't know if you want to jump on that one?
Sure.
Um, go ahead.
Certainly, we are always concerned about kind of what materials are being used. Um, these property owners are using, uh, a lot of natural materials, fieldstone for the retaining wall. Again, there may be some additional engineering requirements and, and I'll defer to, uh, the public work staff and engineering staff on that. Um, they are looking at paver patios, which are, are pretty common. Um, the stairwell and the, um, uh, boathouse are, are existing within the, uh, the view corridor. Um, the, the issue is when we start, there's a lot of, um, non-native, a lot of invasive species that have been planted there over the years or just kind of shown up there over the years. Uh, our concern obviously is soil erosion issues when you start removing ground cover, um, which is why there's a lot of specific requirements for re-establishing the ground cover. Um, I, I don't feel that we're going to run into a lot of noxious issues. Um, the riprap has been existing along that shoreline for many years. Um, but by, um, introducing native species where we can and grasses in such a low ground cover where we can, that should help, um, obviously minimize runoff issues and soil erosion issues, but also any, I guess, toxicity issues that you may have with the, um, uh, with the, uh, the plants and the, and the runoff itself. They are using one of the, I'll say, listed vendors from Jefferson County that they provide for doing, um, these types of plans and projects, um, from the, uh, Jefferson County Land and Water Conservation Department. So, um, this isn't, uh, a foreign group, if you will. Um, they, I, I can't tell you what process Patricia Cicero and her people go through to, to add these people to a list, um, but they are on their list of, of preferred vendors. I don't know if that fully satisfies your questions, but I feel we've, we've checked as many boxes, I think, as we can. And, and to, to Mr. Foster's point, uh, the follow-up is going to be a big issue with this, when you start disturbing soil and making sure, um, what everybody wants to happen, including the property owner, is actually happening when it's constructed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and this is Lisa. I think the, the follow-up is a really, uh, a good addition in that permit. And just a question then for Steve. Um, I know, I think you've mentioned to me that this isn't always, um, a condition of conditional use permits to have that follow-up. So does your staff have the capacity to, to do that follow-up, to, um, track these, you know, kind of keep track on the calendar, um, with, uh, for those requirements?
Well, we knew, thanks for warning me. So we, we discussed this quite a bit this morning at our staff meeting and, uh, Dustin passed on having you identify plants.
That's Brian Caranza.
Yeah, so we, we, um, we discussed Brian Kane going out and taking photographs and sending them to Brian Caranza and, uh, then, um, having the engineers also evaluate it. Uh, so, well, we, we've never actually done this before. Uh, but in preparation for this concept, uh, earlier this year, I had Brian Kane develop a list of, of, uh, conditional uses in the city. And what we will do is we will put the date, uh, that the final inspection was done at the site for the construction and then we will put that into Outlook and then we'll kick up a notice to Brian to go out and inspect and he'll do that for two years. We are also looking at zoning hub. It does have some capacity to do notices. We're trying to figure out if that can also do some notices for us. So yes, I think we've put it in place in the last week since we got notice that we were rebuilding this, that yeah, we can make it happen.
Um, Steve, I can just add, I'm not sure if everybody's aware of Brian Caranza on my staff. He is a landscape architect. So this is well within his purview on identification of, uh, the, the plantings, their health, um, if, if we are, um, achieving what we intend to achieve out there, um, as evaluation on a, over time is, is being done.
I heard Google could do the same thing.
It certainly is not me. I cannot identify plants. I just know greenside up.
I also can identify plants, but most of them are like corn and soybeans and wheat and alfalfa and red corn. But I dare you to hunt for a few.
Um, Dustin, I had, uh, I guess one more question for you, just to make sure I understand. I, I don't want to, um, ask you to speak for the property owner necessarily, but I mean, is it your understanding that this, the, the, sort of the purpose of this project is twofold? One, to be able to move the pier over so that it's not so close to the public pier? And then two, to, um, create a patio in a, in a safer location because their deck on the boathouse, they feel is, is too close to the street?
Yes, if you've been out there, um, or just look at Google Street View, uh, it, it does seem a little precarious. Um, it's only a couple of feet from the edge of pavement to where the, the patio or the, the deck is on the top of, of the, of the boathouse. Um, the, um, the new patio will be located within the view and access corridor. Um, and again, it was the desire to move the pier to the, um, to the north side of the boathouse itself, to get it away from the, the, um, stairwell. Uh, so it is a little more affirmative if you are trespassing, right? Right now, people go down one of the stairs and they think they're going down to the, to the public pier. Uh, they get down there, they're pretty close to each other. Um, a- a- as I said, these properties, you know, are located across the street from the actual residence and again, down a steep hill. It is difficult for property owners to police, um, their own property in this case. And, um, you know, some of these things happen, I think, a little later at night on the weekends in the summer months, um, when, when people are out using the public, um, uh, facilities. But this is so close, I think people just kind of, well, no one can see me. So, and they are just trying to, to provide a little bit of separation. Um, all of those items are being done while within the code. It's these other elements of, um, the retaining wall, the, the ground cover removal, et cetera, and replacement. Those all need the conditional use, um, as, as outlined in a, I'm sorry, lengthy but detailed memo.
Are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, we, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Uh, no.
Motion passed two one.
All right, thank you. Item G, discussion decision on privilege in the street, 304 Lakeshore Drive, Kenneth and Audrey Compeer. Okay, could I get that?
We just did that one, we're doing Cedars.
I'm sorry. No, no, privilege in the street.
Oh, the, you're right. All right, item G, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, can I get that, uh, title read, please, Misty?
City Council Motion 21 dash three dash one dash two, authorizing the granting of a privilege in the street for prohibited encroachment or encumbrance in the right-of-way at 304 Lakeshore Drive by Kenneth and Audrey Compeer.
Okay, before we look at a motion on this, I would like to get, uh, Steve, I think you put together something on this one. Would you like to speak to this?
Yes, uh, we do, we have a lot of, um, items in the street that are either done under the state requirement, which is an occupancy permit, or our privilege in the street. Uh, ours is a little bit more detailed in that the state just tells you when we tear it out, if you're out of luck. Ours says if you do any damage, if anything occurs and people sue us because your piece of property was in our right-of-way, you also have to insure it so that you indemnify us from any insurance claims. Um, in this case, it's a little bit lower than the public right-of-way, so I don't know that it'll be a problem, but people might fall off of it and start making insurance claims, so, um, we allow that, we require them to indemnify us. So as noted, uh, the city code requires that, uh, nothing can be in the public right-of-way. In fact, that's even a state statute. Um, anything that's in the public right-of-way that's a permanent feature is a hazard and considered a, a danger to the driving public. And so, well, we kind of adopted that, uh, consistent with the state. We also provide a option for a privilege in the street and that basically gives them the permission to do it under certain conditions, one of them being the insurance. One of them is that we get to look at it, make sure it meets all the conditions that, that, that we would like to see. So a lot of them we've done are signs, so they have to be 10 feet off the sidewalk and they have to be a certain size and they have to do this. Some of them are, um, well, we did the handicap ramp at the old municipal building there at the corner of church and, and Main Street. Uh, so then we made sure that, uh, there was still plenty of sidewalk left for handicap access up and down the public sidewalk, uh, outside the handicap ramp. And we go through those types of processes of evaluating them and determining whether we're going to give the, the, uh, privilege in the street. In this case, uh, we've reviewed it. Um, the staff has made all the recommendations they feel comfortable with in the, in the conditional use permit. So granting the, um, privilege in the right-of-way, uh, is recommended by staff as long as they meet all the requirements of the privilege in the street.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Is there anybody else that would like to say anything on this? Mr. Drescher, do you have anything to say?
I don't.
Okay.
Okay, so I will...
Could I ask Steve a question, just for some additional clarification? Um, I didn't see the, um, like on a, a Public Works Director memo per se with this, but I know there was a lot of reference in the staff report on the conditional use permit about the, um, height that this, you know, that the wall needed to be in, that it not be, I think Dustin spoke to that earlier too, that it not alter the grade. Um, so is that, you know, the understanding, um, with this adoption, or do we need to sort of include some kind of a condition to make sure that that's clear?
Uh, everything's tied into the conditional use permit.
Okay.
But if you do want the recommendation from the Director of Public Works, he's online. Paul, do you want to make a comment? He's still awake?
Yeah, I thought I saw him.
Yeah, he's on.
I thought I saw his name on there.
Oh, there he goes.
Yeah, that's right.
There we go.
Yeah, we have discussed this at length and I know that Dwayne has taken a hard look at this also and we're in agreement with your recommendations. And it is something we're going to have to keep an eye on and, as I think Mike mentioned, uh, not in the future, we're going to be taking a, taking a look at that street, but I think for now, comfortable with everything that they have planned.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, he said he was comfortable with it.
Okay, thanks, because I couldn't hear a word.
I had to raise my stuff, uh, my speaker up here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I will ask for a motion of adoption for this motion of 21 dash three dash one dash two.
Hold on, I gotta pull up that number.
Yep.
I move to adopt motion, or, uh, 21 dash three dash one dash two.
Thank you, Ms. Quinno. Is there a second?
Second, yes, I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Curler. Um, so the only question I had, it, it looks like this retaining wall will also serve a purpose to direct rainwater. I'm assuming that's, uh, one of the very important things that... I'm assuming that's one of the very important things that allowed the city staff and the public works to recommend this?
Actually, a little bit different than that. I would say that it made us ask some questions and go into greater detail about how concentrated the water was going to be and the velocity of it. But from what we viewed, it's already got a retaining wall that was made out of powerpools, and it's already doing this, and it seems to, we actually felt that the stone wall would pass more water through and not create as much velocity as it's actually had before. So we felt pretty comfortable in allowing this wall to go in as designed. Did you hear all that, Mike?
Yep, I did. Thanks, Steve. I, yep, I did. That was the only question I had, I just wanted to check on that, because that was some of the stuff that was really pointed out in there. All right, with that being said, unless there's any other questions, I will ask Misty to call the roll call vote.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
Thank you. Item H, resolution 21-13, can I get that title read, please?
City Council Resolution 21-13, Conditional Use Permit, Declarations and Findings. Cedars Management Corporation, the Cedars, Alternative Shoreline Vegetation Cutting Plan and Grading Within 300 Feet of the Ordinary High Watermark of Rock Lake, 304 Lake Shore Drive, parcel identification numbers 24607131141068, 24607131441069, and 24607131441080.
Thank you, council members. So we have the motion, and we actually have the plan commission sign motion in front of you with the recommendations on there, and they're very similar to the last recommendations. The only thing different in this one is I asked them to put in the requirement of providing a full plan that the city planners and the staff can review before any work is continued and before they work on it to complete the vision of what the work should look like down there based on the current city regulations. So Mr. Wolf, we'll let you take over from here and give everybody a little synopsis.
Okay, so this one's a little more complicated. So the Cedar site was developed long before the city had the codes and ordinances in place that it does as it relates to shoreline, vision and access corridors, the cutting and alternative cutting plans, the grading, dredging, lagooning stuff that's in our code. The code that we have worked really well and was designed well for, I'll say, individual properties along the lakeshore. It really wasn't designed for some of these, I'll say, heritage properties on the lake that have large acreage that are owned by larger groups or consortiums or associations, and where there are a number of improvements that have already been made, where there are a variety of boathouses or other structures, certain pathways. Again, the idea behind the code that we have is to enable, I'll say, limited practical use of the shoreline for an individual property owner. In an area, most properties along the lake aren't a couple hundred feet wide or more. This is that exception. So unfortunately, our existing zoning code is not an apples-to-apples application here, and it is something to bear in mind. Part and parcel of this is because this site developed so many years ago, it had been experiencing for a number of years eroding shoreline. And this is a case where the property owners went out to correct that, and there are, there is the ability to make certain shoreline improvements, riprap and/or similar, along the shoreline based upon DNR rules. But there's a tipping point where it starts to become an issue that's not DNR regulated, and it's regulated by the municipality. And that's where we started to run into this issue. They were out there, they were making, I'll say, just improvements to address erosion issues and their usability issues along the shoreline. It was noticed by the county and brought to the attention of the city that there was a lot of work going on out there greater than before, or seemingly greater than before, and it needed to be addressed by the city. And so this started last summer, where we were, there were meetings on site to evaluate what the conditions were, what work had been done, how does city codes and ordinances apply to this, you know, was there, I wouldn't say there was malice in the approach by the Cedars on this, I would say that they thought that they were doing something they were allowed to do based upon some of the inquiries they had made to what they thought were the bodies of jurisdiction related to the shoreline. As I said, there's a tipping point, how far inland you start going with those shoreline improvements, and how far above grade-wise topography, above the waterline itself. And that's where we started getting into an issue. And then again, you know, where is that limit where our code kind of applies, and then kind of where does the code not necessarily apply very well? So that's the issue we've run into, where a fair amount of stone was brought into the site to address the shoreline erosion issue, general site erosion issues, because they are pretty sandy soils down there. And then there are, and if you want more detail, I will turn to Duane or Paul on this, but there are some kind of cross-property drainage that's occurring from the roadways and kind of uphill issues that they were trying to develop a stone swale to enable that drainage to occur without, I'll say, providing or resulting in more erosion. The issue we got into here is when that line was crossed in the city's eyes where they should have come to the city for review and approval of their plans. They were working with a contractor who certainly has done this type of work in the past and knew what he wanted to do, but there was no plan provided to the city to evaluate to see if this kind of met the balance between protecting and mitigating erosion issues and also addressing some of the other aesthetic concerns that we have with views to and from the shoreline. And were these the best practices that should have been employed to address the concerns that the property owners had with the land itself? So kind of that's the stickiness that we're in right now. There was, again, lengthy discussion at the hearing at the plan commission level. The takeaway on this is, I don't think we're in, trying to do any finger pointing, we're just trying to determine what's kind of the best approach for preserving the shoreline, improving the aesthetics, making it usable for the multiple families that have access to this. Like I said, this is different than a single-family home that has access to kind of a smaller area along the shoreline. This is accessible to a number of residents in the area, so it does kind of serve a bigger At the end of the day, the city and the plan commission passed a resolution with a series of conditions that called for a certain amount of vegetative restoration. Some basic graphics were put into the memo to that effect. That certain riprap that was installed can remain, that certain pathways can be provided to access the water's edge and the boathouse, the existing boathouse, that certain vegetation can remain, but there are other areas where vegetation needs to be restored. And that could be done through a variety of ways, which could be removal of certain stone and provide plantings, or provide plantings within the stone that has been placed, which might mean some other medium, growing medium over the top of that existing or that placed As Mr. Foster said, a lot of the conditions were the same as previous. One of the most notable here is, we need a detailed planting plan, we need a detailed site plan out there that shows us, I'll say, kind of the new existing conditions and what their plan is for achieving what the code requires, which is quality ground cover that is native to here, that will help meet the conditions or the requirements for views to and from the shoreline, that aesthetic component, which is clearly outlined in the code. And that is a plan that can be implemented with immediacy. And then there are elements that the members of the Cedars have expressed that they want to do over time, and so that plan should start to identify what those are as well. That the swale should be evaluated to determine if vegetation is needed to be replaced in that area. Again, the city's engineers and public work staff should be evaluating that and to make sure that it complies with code requirements. Extensive use of landscape fabric, again, in areas. So unfortunately, at the end of the day, what we have is, and this is not meant to be rude, but we have a glorified cocktail napkin sketch drawing of kind of what's been done out there. And it's just not of sufficient detail to clearly illustrate what they've done, some of the topography associated with it, and the recommendations of the staff that were approved by the plan commission for reintroducing or mitigating some of the stone that has been put out there with new plantings. So we do have a tiered feel for planting, so it does have a different aesthetic from the, when looking at the land from the lakeshore. And again, the plan commission did implement or insert the requirement for two years of inspection of the site. But at the end of the day, we really just need to get a plan put together that works for the Cedars, that works for the land, and that can be implemented and, I think, clearly policed or enforced by the city to achieve what the code is really striving for. So that's where we're at on this, that the plan commission did approve that, and that's the signed motion that you have, and as it relates to the memo that was provided by us, the planner and the landscape architect, I think one of the other issues that isn't really covered in there is some level of timeliness. The ball was put into the hands of the Cedars to bring back a plan, to develop a plan and bring it back to us. There isn't any timeframe attached to that. So is that two months, six months, a year from now, right? These improvements have been made, they need to be addressed so we can rectify the concerns that the city has and the public has. I don't want to mitigate, there was a lot of people that spoke out both for and against this, but the plan commission has said, we need a better plan, we want to see you implement some of the recommendations that came from the planner and the landscape architect. But the one issue missing, as I mentioned, is some level of timeframe. So I would hope that whatever the council does, that they would probably put in some timeframe by which they need to bring a plan back to be evaluated at the staff level and implemented.
All right, thank you, Dustin. So council members, before we start any discussion, I will ask for a motion of adoption.
I move that we adopt City Council Resolution 21-13.
Thank you. Lisa, is there a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Quinno, a second. Thank you again, Dustin, that was very helpful for all of us. And some of the concerns that we heard early on in our meeting today, where work had started prior to getting permissions, permission needed, falls not only on the people doing the work, but it also sort of falls on the way that the plans were written. It's not very easily found where it states you need to get certain approvals and this is how you do this stuff. And that is a recommendation that I made to the plan commission, that we go back and we review those pieces to make sure that information is easily found for folks that want to do different types of fixes on their property. So with this piece of property, all the conversation pointed around, this is a joint-use property. So it's like an HOA in some aspects, they all own it, they all maintain it, it's a, it's a limited liability corp, I believe of 501(c) seven?
Seven.
Okay, and three. So they manage it as a corporation. And we did go through and make the recommendations that a plan needs to be created before any work will start on this, and the recommendation to set a timeline is a very, is a very good I guess I'll stop right there and ask both of you, Lisa and Michelle, if you have any recommendations to modify the conditions.
I do, and I, oh, sorry, do you want to go? Okay. You were reading my mind, Dustin, you know, I had kind of been thinking about this, well, let me step back. So we have, you know, there's a complicated history, the ownership of this site, whatever misunderstandings or miscommunications occurred, we're in a situation now where work was done without a permit, and we don't have an approvable plan. So I think the plan commission did, you know, the right thing in saying, we need to get that plan. But what I'm concerned about is, as Dustin said, there's no timeframe for getting it, and so, you know, at what point is the city going to start to feel that we need to take enforcement action because there hasn't been a plan? I feel like it would be clearer and fairer to put something, you know, amend the resolution to add a date certain that a plan has to be submitted. I'm a little bit unsure about what that date should be, though, and I don't know if Mr. Burrows is there, if we would want to suspend the rules and have him come up to address when, you know, what their plans are as far as a timeline, or, you know, what's reasonable, or maybe there's a past practice that the city has for how long we would allow someone that we could use here. But I would suggest revising condition one to add a date certain.
Okay, so would you like to make the motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I will move that we suspend the rules to allow Mr. Burrows to come up and talk with the council.
All right.
Assuming he's there.
Yep, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, let's call a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Ms. Quinno?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
Okay, so Lisa, go ahead and ask your question. He is there and ready to go.
Okay, great. Thank you for coming tonight, Chris, and I appreciate that there has been a lot of conversations going on about this, and I'm new to it, but I did listen to the plan commission meeting and reviewed all the material. So I guess my primary question for you is, have you folks had a chance to think about when you will, when, what's your timeframe for submitting a plan to the city?
I'm colorblind, so I'm good, I think I'm on. So we've had limited time, but we just briefly chatted about it, and we met last week, obviously, in the planning commission. And we met last week, obviously, in the Planning Commission meeting last Thursday, so we've had a few days. But we think that we would like to have until June. That allows us to get some of the snow off and be able to accurately assess what we have and what we would like to do. So I think in that period of time, that would allow us to do a good job and yet have growing season yet for the remainder of the summer.
So that would be June of 2021?
Correct.
Okay.
So Lisa, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that's a reasonable timeframe, if that's realistic. I mean, that's really, you know, three to four months. So if we could say June 30th, so I don't, maybe Dan can help me craft the how to amend Submit a revised plan consistent with the recommendations and conditions outlined in the planner's memo no later than June 30th of 2021?
It sounds right to me. I don't know if you want to add language, you know, prior to any more remedial efforts or anything like that, but identifying if a date certain seems appropriate.
Did you get that, Lisa?
No, I can't hear Dan.
Oh, yeah. He said it sounds appropriate. The only thing that he might recommend is making a comment at the end saying that, oh, how did you?
Basically that no construction activities are going on.
Yeah, no construction activities will start or continue prior to that date.
So, question. Is that indicating that we are going to approve this with the acknowledgement that there's going to be a plan? Is there any, like, penalty? Should there be any kind of work being done beforehand?
So under our ordinances now, I mean, we technically could cite the petitioner in this circumstance for the violations of the zoning code that exists. There hasn't been that discussion, and we've taken an approach to remediate the effort under a conditional use permit rather than...
I can't hear Attorney Drescher at all.
I thought this was on.
No, you have to get one of these fancy-smancy ones. I'll mute so that you don't echo.
Yeah. No, I think good.
All right. How am I now? All right. How am I now? Good to go?
I don't think so. Lisa, can you hear Dan or no?
I think it was really loud for her.
It's too...
Okay.
It's your fault. I can't hear.
Okay. Refresh me on what I was answering.
I asked if there was any penalty.
Oh, yeah. So for violations under the code, there could be citations that are drafted right now to require compliance by time certain. In the process, we are focusing on remediation and approaching a situation where the conditional use permit remediation of the shoreline activities occurs rather than punishment at this point. Under the code, there is leeway to go the other direction. Okay, I muted because he was... Mike, I muted Dan because he was blowing our ears out. So if you could repeat what he said again, I would really appreciate that.
No, we can't repeat what he said. It was just too much. No kidding. Go ahead. Do you want me to try to paraphrase what you said?
No, I can try again. I turned my volume down. Is that better? More?
I muted.
He is muted, yeah.
Can Dan go to the podium?
Yeah, I'll do that. Good call. Yep.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so my statement was that under the code, the city has the ability to cite if that was the goal right now. The petitioner did apply for the conditional use permit, has been cooperating with the city. We enter a winter season here where work obviously isn't being done. So no enforcement action, no penalty action has been taken against them. I think providing them a date certain with notice and requiring a form of compliance at that point, subject to the potential of a penalty, is an appropriate response at this point. That's basically what I said.
So Dan, I just want to acknowledge the concern brought to our attention at the beginning of this meeting in that we're setting a precedent. And I want, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think this is precedential in nature. The facts are that we are still adapting to a zoning code that was relatively recently adopted, 2014, I believe. And shoreline preservation issues, shoreline enforcement issues, it gained a lot of traction in the last maybe year and a half or so. And there are more eyes, there are more people that are aware of what the code says, and there is an effort from the city to get broader compliance on the issue. So it's a present issue, and we're addressing it more aggressively than it's basically been addressed in the past. So I guess to answer the direct question, I don't know that there was an argument with regard to precedence. The city does have some, you know, functional and functionality issues with regard to how it is addressing this cumbersome process, but we're working it out.
I can go back and say that I've been through this question multiple times over the last 40 years, and there will be no precedence.
So then, Dan, it sounded like you thought that we should add not just a date certain, but, or maybe that was Michelle's idea, to also add some reference to that there would be penalties? Or is that not needed then because the enforcement authority stands on its own?
I believe under our ordinance that it exactly does stand on its own, that if we receive a violation, we investigate it. If there is meat on the bone, then a citation or some form of enforcement activity can occur. That's clearly stated, in my opinion, in our code. Adding it to a conditional use, I think the appropriate enforcement activity with the conditional use would actually be, if you don't comply with the terms of the conditional use permit, you don't have a permit. You absolutely could add some form of citation or something like that if you deem it appropriate. In this circumstance, I don't know that it is. I mean, we have a group of well-established homeowners on a very prized property, and I believe that they are going to, then they've made efforts to comply at this point. We just need to tighten up the actual process and proceed rather than kind of getting bogged down here in these, you know, in my opinion, arguments that the time would be better utilized if we had progress on the site and some form of collaboration in approaching the goals that we all have stated and the obligations that are in the ordinance as opposed to kind of just flapping our gums about, you know, penalties and after-the-fact enforcement and such. It's a process that needs to be perfected, if perfect is the goal, but we're working on it. And I think we've seen great improvement in the process in the last year, year and a half, and it's going to get better. These first cases are difficult, and you'll see more in the future. This specific case, it's an incredibly complex situation when you really get down to everything. And it's, a lot of aspects of it are, you know, round peg, square hole. It just doesn't quite fit right. But we're moving towards that common goal, and I think that's kind of a great place to jump off on this one. Thanks.
That's all for my legal questions, I guess. And I do, at least for myself, Mr. Burrows, I'm pleasantly surprised by the date that you felt that you would be able to provide a plan. I can see that you're taking this seriously and wanting to, you know, get this taken care of, and so I appreciate that. I thank you for that. So are you comfortable if we would adopt this resolution and include a date of June 30th, that that would be something you folks could meet?
We will. Yeah, I would like to just ask a couple of clarification questions if I could. One is that we are able to put our peers in and do a spring cleanup, which we normally do as a part of this process, which would mean, you know, going down, picking up sticks and doing other things that we would normally do as Cedars members. So just to make sure that we don't run into an issue with that. Second is the ability to break out these two projects, and one is the shoreline, the other is the swale. We had understood that we would work with the city engineer to move forward and follow their recommendations with that, if we could do that separately, if that's done earlier. We have significant water issues in that upper kettle, and that is just something we'd like to get resolved. And as a part of the snow load melting and in the thaw, that's typically when we lose the path because the kettle overruns and it just pours down into the lake. And that was the purpose of getting this accomplished, as well as any other periods of heavy rain and that kettle taking a load. So we would like to finish the swale. We understand what the process is for the approval of that. And then, you know, we would provide the plans for the beautification and the part by the boathouse by June 30th. Complete.
So I want to throw this out there. Dustin, the swale part that we're talking about is the separate from this planting stuff, the stuff that we had talked about in the Plant Commission, correct? This is about talking about the kettles and...
It is, but it isn't. That's the unfortunate part. I mean, it's on the property. We understand the need to address it. If it needs to be addressed, if that's the priority, I think there still needs to be a plan.
Definitely.
That highlights...
Not arguing.
If Plan A, if one A is the swale and one B is the rest of the site, we don't want to do something with the swale that would be contrary to what should happen for the rest of the site. I don't think anybody wants that. But I can't say for certain what needs to be done with the swale. But it's a fully-stone swale, is my understanding, and that may not be best as it, it may not be the best medium for accomplishing what needs to be accomplished out there, right? So I don't want to close the door on what might be best overall for the, the stone was used, but that might not be the best kind of material.
Understood, but you would provide the oversight of that, correct? So if this is a "to be done by June 30th," and we move and we are able to provide drawings of plan and approval of the swale, and I understand that there's kind of two options for that, whether or not it is the stone or a French drain or a combination of both, that would be worked through with you, with planning, and all of that would be done by date of 6/30.
I would generally be comfortable with that. It's just, there's going to be a lot of input from the city on what should be done in the drainage site, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, drainage is a little complicated. So, yeah, it's a bit of a...
Okay.
And then as far as the pier, I don't think anything precludes them from putting the pier in and doing their cleanup.
Yeah, definitely not.
I don't think that, I don't think there's anything that stands in the way of that.
Thank you.
Okay. So Lisa, you're...
Mr. Burrows?
Thank you, sir.
That it?
Yep, that's it. So you made the amendment.
No, she hasn't motioned for the amendment yet. Just motioned to suspend the rules, I believe.
I was kind of working out the language.
Gotcha.
I don't know if I formally made it. So I would like to move that we amend Resolution 21-13 to revise Condition 1 and add at the end of the sentence in Condition 1 the phrase, "No later than June 30th, 2021."
Okay. Is there a second?
I second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Can we get a roll call vote on that amendment?
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
Okay. So is there any other discussion that anybody would like to bring up at this point?
Are you asking about the next agenda or something else?
No, no, not yet. Not yet, Steve. We just voted on the amendment to it. We still have to vote on the actual motion itself.
The resolution, yeah.
I just went to sleep here. I just don't know why I can't see stuff on this thing. Come on, there we go. Okay. So if there's no other discussion on this, I will ask for a roll call vote on Resolution 21-13 as amended.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Ms. Quinell?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
Okay, so that means you have until the 30th to have your plan ready, and if you get it ready before then and everything is approved to start work, you will be able to start your plan and get the remediation process or finalization process in order. So, thank you. And thank you. Okay. Recommendation for future agendas?
This is Lisa. I had a, I guess I have a suggestion, or maybe it's a question. I think in the, after the unfortunate passing of Diane Fritsch and then the unexpected special meeting last week, there perhaps wasn't as much recognition for Vicky and Doug as, and I don't know what is normally done by the council, but I was curious if like a resolution for each of them acknowledging their service on the council would be appropriate.
Yes, it is. So that will be coming up in future agendas. So yes, thank you. All right. So I also want to give a shout out to the Lake Mills Boys Basketball and wish them best of luck in this weekend in the tournament. And hopefully they're as successful as our young ladies were. With that being said, we are now adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.